Call this meeting order Stewart City Council 10th Agenda Monday, November 14, 2022, 6:30 PM, Council agenda. Call to order Patrick.
Here.
Dolley.
Here.
Morgan. Hava. Renslow.
Here.
Agenda approval consent agenda. Approval of minutes of 10:10, 2022 and special meetings of 10:14, 2022. Approval of financial statements as of 10:30, 2022. Approval of bills that present.
So moved.
Moved by Renslow.
I'll start now.
Second by Patrick. How do you got Patrick?
Yes.
Dolley.
Yes.
Renslow.
Yes.
Ordinance number 2207C. And on this one here, I would strongly recommend we take no action on this because if we take action on this, you're not going to be able to enforce the Womble Edition, the Marks Park or the downtown area. I think we moved too fast on this. If our code enforcement person has a problem with this, then maybe we'll have to look at different avenue what we're going to do. Because we've got to enforce all through town. I think we moved too fast on this.
Do we have a memo from our attorney explaining this?
On?
On this? If so, what would be nice, I mean for me, what would be nice is if our attorney could do a memo or letter to us explaining exactly what this means in our terms. So when we say we're going to remove the restricted covenants, he goes through X, Y, and Z. So that way we know what we're doing. And we're not just thinking it's here and here and here. Maybe it's not, maybe it is, I don't know. But a memo from him explaining that would be nice before we do anything, just so we know what we're doing.
Okay. I mean, you can do that, but I would like to no action on this so we can treat the whole town the same.
But I would like a memo explaining why, what it is. So we are all informed on what we should do.
Because originally Jason said going out to the Womble Edition, doing code enforcement, he said, well, it wasn't really fair since they have their own covenants. But I said, well, you get paid the same. And he did very little time out there anyway compared to the rest of town. But no, that's fine.
I think it's more fair to know the pros and cons of both sides.
Hey, come up.
Yeah.
I would like to put together a workshop, maybe get a couple of counseling together, a couple of people together, maybe research this. And I would like to have permission to reach out to the attorney and get maybe a memo and get some feedback from them if that's.
I mean, I would really like a memo so we know exactly what the ordinance states in our terms.
Because I have found some communities that do do it and they feel that they've got it done legally. They've had their attorneys prepare similar documents to what we have. So I would like a little bit more time to research, look into it and reach out to our attorney and maybe reach out to the attorney that grew up to your original ordinance and get their feedback, give them an opportunity to.
I don't need the old attorney, I just think the new one can interpret it and let us know what we're doing and what it is.
So you have other communities that have, part of their town is in a covenants and part of their town isn't.
Correct.
And code enforcement will enforce?
Yes.
Both sides of that.
Yes.
Yeah, I would like more information on that too. I'm not for it or against it, I'm kind of on the fence.
I just want more information.
I do too, I need to be educated a little bit.
The way Jason explained it was, it was just out there. But what they're saying is it's out there, it's here, and it's here. But we don't, I don't know that. So I mean, if we could at least get a memo from them.
Do you need anything from us to table it?
No, the council intention would be to seek more information for next meeting and allow Matt to be involved in the process to help us. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
Okay, five. Tricia here?
Yes.
I'm here. How are you guys tonight?
Good, good.
Good. So you have the route, I believe, right? And I did get that approved by the police department and by Jim. Is there any questions to that? Okay, what else? The parking is going to be in the conversational church, I got that approved by them. And I believe Katie is. And she said she's going to help out where she can. We aren't going to block off the whole two block strip of Second Street. After talking with Jim, we've just decided to block off in front of the pocket park where it's going to start and finish. And then I have plenty of volunteers that are going to be in different areas throughout the route to help with traffic and to let the runners, walkers know which way they need to go.
Sure.
So you need just to go ahead?
I just need a door.
We need a motion to give the.
So moved.
Second by Renslow. And by Dolley. Patrick?
Yes.
Dolley?
Yep.
Renslow?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rachel.
You want me to, okay, so on the second part of that, on the street closure, I met with a few of the people from downtown. It was the Cup on Second, Do Adir, myself, The Flower Shop, and the Stewart Scoop. And we sat down and we discussed what we think could be an appropriate way to go about this. And I mean, I would propose it would start January 1st, we can start at the beginning of the year. But it was kind of our thought, if we had a form on our website, a Google form that they could fill out and then it gets submitted to City Hall. And then this, it would then, City Hall could just send one mass email to the side that it affects. You have, I can't even remember, I think it was 48 hours to respond if you're opposed. And if they don't get any response, then it can be sent to Jim and Dave. And if they do oppose, then Jim and Dave can address the situation unless it's something they think needs to come here. But they need to do it a month in advance. So that way they can hit the council meeting before they're. But it was, it would be all done and I would assist getting these email addresses so that way it doesn't bog down in City Hall. But that way an email gets sent to everybody, whether they're a business or a, you know, or just maybe have a business in the building. But they all know, they all have 48 hours to respond. If they don't, it goes forward, if they do, they can address it. And then if it needs to go further, come here.
Okay. If there's a, not last minute or less than one month in advance, could they still come here?
I mean, I think they could still go forward and if there's no, I mean, if there's nobody that says no, then they can go forward.
I just don't know if there's going to be.
I think the issue arises that if there's a issue that Jim and Dave don't think they can, you know, if it's just somebody saying, no, I don't want the event because I'm stubborn, then they can address that. And they, they know the situation and they can address it. But I think if it becomes a bigger problem, then they can come here. I don't know. That's kind of what we came up with to propose.
I'm for it, I mean, I don't see any reason to go against it, I mean.
We just want to make sure that we're getting communication out to everybody so that way.
Everybody would need to know about it.
But we can start in January, so that way there's a whole timeframe.
We need a motion to approve the process as agreed by Councilmember.
So we'll eventually have a form or something.
Yeah, I'll get, I'll work with the gal, get a form to present next month. And then we'll, I can work with Mike, is it Mike Ternan that does our website? So he can make a Google form. And then I'll have all the email addresses and stuff like that. But we want to make sure the process was okay.
Maybe Dolley?
I'll start now.
Patrick, how do you got?
Patrick?
Yes.
Dolley?
Yes.
Renslow?
Yes.
Okay, six. Two public library, the order trustees. And you talking?
I am talking. I mentioned that. I think we need to have the lights dimmed in the back so we can see the slideshow. My name is Lynn Calltrager and I'm president of the Board of Trustees for the Stewart Library. I've lived in this area for over 30 years and am a retired teacher. My part in the library is to represent rural Guthrie County. I want to thank the council for giving me this opportunity to blow my horn this evening about the library. We are very proud of what has been accomplished in order to serve our community. We are fortunate to have Lisa Struman as our librarian. And Lisa is always alert to the trends and policies to make the library the best it can be. Even though the trustees are the governing board for our library, there are two other active groups who believe in its mission. They are the foundation and the PALS. The mission of the Stewart Public Library is to serve as dynamic gathering place and center for lifelong learning for people of all ages. Are you starting to see the diversity in some of these pictures about the different age That come to the library? This just shows you how dynamic we really are. Please notice the number of people, the ages and the diversity and the type of activity. Do you want to know something about cooking? Come to the library. How about making a zombie doll? Come to the library. Do you need to send your resume to a prospective employer? The library can help you with that. Of course, we have the latest novel on the bestseller list. Parents that might be worried about the summer slip for their child can make sure they attend the summer reading program. And you know what? We talk aloud in the library. None of this quiets the library business. Take, I think in your packets today you have some of the numbers. It's pretty phenomenal to compare the numbers with the year ago. I think with the new addition that we're bringing in lots more patrons than we had before, which is good. And we're proud of that. We have our trustee meeting on the third Wednesday, or third Monday. And Lisa will say, today I signed up 10. Or on Saturday, I had five. That starts to add up. Yep, we're into lifelong learning here. And thanks to our funding sources, we intend to grow and change to get better. November is usually a good time to ask for an increase in funds. I won't lie and say we wouldn't like that. We, the city, the county, although ADEAR contributes no money to the Stewart. And when I say ADEAR, I mean that the ADEAR Board of Supervisors does not contribute money to the Stewart Public Library. Our foundation, I'll bet some of you bid on an item at the auction recently, the PALS, yes, we do bake sales, as well as memorials and personal donations. However, recently we've discovered that the library's funds have been adjusted each year depending on what the Guthrie County supervisors extend, expense to the city from the library. The funds from the county are to be used to supplement the city's budget to the library rather than to be in place of the city's appropriation to the library. We would request this be corrected into the future. I would hope that the council is as proud of the library as we are and won't hesitate to toot the horn of their Stewart Public Library. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, seven, Stewart Economic Development Director, Matt Hong.
Before I go on my report, I would like to say that back when I was on the city council, we've had some discussions with the library. And I think the library has made tremendous improvements and advancements in the last 12 years, so just wanted to throw that out there. Okay, I'm going to start off with, we got the Womble Edition, we have a lot 23. Not available at the meantime, it's being reconfigured. Lot 23, Womble 2. I sent out in your package, should have had a map of of the Womble 2 edition. Lots 22 and 23 outlined in red. Yes, you have those right now. Two maps, there's an option one and an option two. I did take a, to the seat meeting last month, forced it after me to find out, to get some feedback from the seat group about one or two, option one or option two. And asked for your feedback as well. The seat group has collectively agreed on option two. And I guess this is kind of an opportunity, if you really want to, to speak up. But I think the desire is for you to agree. Option two would be the best option.
So I.
Go ahead.
I was just going to say, I, it looks like option two might be better because the other one you're split, the city parking to two.
Yeah. Limits the parking and that does kind of make two parks, so option two's.
You have a street between one park on each side and one park on each side, right? Then option one.
So, and I don't, far as a motion, I think it just needs consecutive or collective agreement.
Yeah, it's just informational and if there's any questions or comments or some thoughts of doing it different, then we just want to have the option for council to express that, otherwise it's just an informational kind of thing.
All right, well, I'm going to move on to the next item. I'm not going to go over the entire report, I'm just going to go over a few items. Mark here. Okay. Peter Johnson with Midwest Partnership and I, seat, have been working on a bridge, a pedestrian bridge. Need to ask, okay, so the options are, we could have a standalone bridge for about $2 million. That would be open to more federal funds, more federal grants. Or we could go with a cantilever pedestrian bridge and utilize the existing bridge. And that option would be about $1,250,000. Chris Whitaker of Region 12 believes the city would need to come up with somewhere between 25 to 50% on both options. So just going to need some feedback from the group, where would you like to maybe kind of focus the attention? What can I give back to Chris with? Fortunately, I have four sitting today, so if you have any questions, today would probably be your best opportunity to add.
So you say the standalone is 10 million?
2 million.
2 million? I thought you said 10, I was like.
Sorry. And this is.
Wow.
Well, 10 million basics, this, there's nothing pretty about these options. This is basics.
I guess my concern with the cantilever on the existing bridge, so what if the DOT comes in there and says, we're going to replace that bridge? Are they going to expand onto that to give us back our pedestrian bridge on the side of that? That's something that we'll have to consider too. I'm not saying that bridge is going to be up for replacement by the DOT by no means, but anytime soon.
It's not up for replacement. Yeah, so, Forrest, I think you were part of that conversation.
So we're looking at rebacking it potentially in the future, but not replacing.
Would they essentially go on the same spot? Like the standalone bridge is going to be real close to it?
Yes, yeah.
So, I mean, I think we need to, I think we just need to have more information on bottom line pricing. I mean, I, I mean, if we're going to get more grants with a standalone, how much are we going to get to make up three quarters of a million?
You know, we're, time is of the essence and my time is valuable too. Chris Whitaker's time is valuable. It looked like they had narrowed down to make a decision, which type of grant do you pursue? Because one ain't going to work with the other. Standalone bridge is more federal funds. The cantilever bridge, you're going to have to go after private funding, private grants. Where do you want the attention to go to? Or do you want to think about it?
But this is also potentially helping us with the development south of town, correct? Because I think that development out there kind of halted because there is no pedestrian, I mean, there's no way for pedestrians to go across the bridge safely. Am I remembering that correctly?
That's the biggest complaint I had when my own family started having children and said, our kids don't want to walk across the bridge by themselves.
So potentially if we did this, we could keep developing that way.
Yes, I am trying to get some development on the south side.
Right, but I'm just, I'm thinking out loud here.
So. So for the standalone bridge, would this be to the west of this bridge now? Is that what, potentially, or the east side? I guess my question is, is it close to the bridge that's out there now? Because now we're going to be dumping pedestrians on the ramps. Are we going past the ramps?
No, this would be, my thought would be it'd be next to it and probably to the east. So line up with McDonald's side and the new Quick Start side. But it would be next to the bridge and pedestrians would need to cross at the ramps.
At the ramps.
Because if we put it far further east or west, it gets beyond the ramps, no one will go that, all the way down there and all the way back.
I'm just wondering as a safety standpoint, would I let my kids cross the ramps? No?
No, people don't stop at those.
Right. So I mean, this kind of raises some questions on the safety part of it. Right, if you want that would not stop. You have a stop sign on the north side.
Right.
But the, yeah, the south side, traffic would stop.
Your crossing would be prior to the stop sign though? On the north? To remain in the right of way, it would be prior to the stop sign?
You have to put the crossing and then the stop sign, is that what you're saying?
That's the way it would lay out, it would be just crossing.
It wouldn't be stop sign and then crossing, it would be crossing and then stop sign.
Correct.
Have you ever dealt with anything like this, Forrest?
Yeah, I mean, we'd have to look at the traffic at the north side and it might be something with head crossings, lights, all that kind of thing. I don't know, we haven't gotten that far in, into it.
So what you're thinking, I mean, what you're meaning from us today is if we were to pursue this, you need to go one option or the other?
Yes.
I mean, to lose the numbers.
Yes. We need to kind of get unified on.
What it would look like before we have any further discussion.
I guess, my opinion is, you know, if we got to deal with the ramps, the pedestrians walking across the ramps, you know, the cantilever is 1.2 million. I mean, if we're going to have a regular standalone bridge and we still have to deal with the ramps. Right, that's where I'm at with it.
Yeah.
Do you know what I mean?
Yeah, three quarters of millions, three quarters of millions.
Right.
Yeah, so, I mean, and it's, after the grants, you know, federal grants, by the way, the infamous grant, they were supposed to come from the federal government.
The infrastructure bill.
Infrastructure bill. That's dwindling out into loans. And it's not what I think the public was allowed to believe that it was going to be.
So I guess, maybe you don't know this answer, Matt, but we'll try. Would it be easier to get our, get our hands on the money federally or privately? We don't know?
No.
Yeah. I mean, I'm all for it, I think it's a great idea. But just which route to go, what would be the easiest money wise, I guess? Your guys' thoughts?
I mean, I'm with you on that smaller option, smaller money option. See where we can, where the numbers fall.
Is there a timeframe difference as far as construction purposes?
No, probably not, it'd be similar. Because you have to, you have to cantilever on both sides. So it's a five, like a five, six foot sidewalk on one side and a six foot sidewalk on the other side. If you did a trail kind of thing, but if the cantilever, they're not saying, depends if we're going to have trail money, then you need both sides. If you're just going after a sidewalk, you just need one side.
Yeah, so.
So we have options within, back to you, so.
Yeah. I just, I'm going to throw my thoughts into the fray. Yeah, my thought was if we're going cantilever, the DOT is going to require us to be on both sides. So you're crossing both ramps on both the east side of the bridge and on the west side of the bridge. Whereas if you go a standalone bridge, we're just crossing ramps on one side of the bridge. And I don't know, if, if we can get federal money, trail money, pay for half of it, that gets your $2 million down to $1 million. Private money, we're probably looking at maxing out at a quarter of a million. And I presume that private money is going to be there regardless of whether we get the federal money or not. That gets you down to three quarters of a million versus a million with the, you know, so, I don't know, maybe we can raise half a million, I don't know.
So there's no right way and there's no wrong way.
Well, what we're doing is exploring and looking at numbers. I mean, we're not.
Right, you're not committed to anything.
We're just, we're just looking at numbers.
Yes, just trying to narrow it down to which path.
So even though the standalone is more, we might get more money, which is going to cost us less, right? Is that what you're saying?
That's what I'm saying.
In the long run?
If we get it though.
Yeah, if we get it, so.
If we get it, if we don't get it, we're not coming back.
But this is a long term thing, like do we want to connect our south side to our north side? Long term.
The other, the other advantage I see is, I think we want Matt working on the trails project anyway, just for amenities around town. So if, if we go the standalone, we're going the trails route.
Which isn't a bad idea.
Yeah.
And we're just looking at numbers.
Trails grant, which a couple of you look. Trails grant, which a couple of you looked at some other ideas that we've had regarding trails, so we're trying to meet that in with the trail grant. The trail system as well.
That's, that's more consistent, knowing, knowing that information now, that, you know, that it kind of goes with the trail stuff, which is standalone.
All that's an effort, nothing's a guarantee, but that's.
So you don't really need a motion, you just need some guidance?
Yes.
Okay, so my opinion would probably no, now, I mean, now that that's explained a little more. For me, I think a standalone pedestrian bridge would be my preference to have you research to see where the numbers come in at.
Sure.
I don't know enough about it, I mean, I, I hate the idea of having crossings on the east and west side. I mean, that, that just seems really dumb. Must have been put in stopwatch or something really wild like that, yeah, I agree with you, I don't think you're sending your kids or anybody like to go to McDonald's.
Alright, so three out of four.
If we're having money to Quick Start, some of that private money might come from Quick Start.
So three out of four of you are saying to go with standalone? Alright, thank you.
Matt, I have a question for you before you finish your.
Okay.
Before you walk away, go ahead and finish, but I have something for you after we're done.
And Thursday night's meeting is a product of the utility board, would you like to see about getting some electric service, more electric service for the downtown? And some lighting in the pocket park? So the utility board is asking to organize a meeting. With some people to take a look at the downtown area. If any city councilman would like to be a part of that, let me know.
I wouldn't mind, Matt, but can this also be part of a joint meeting? We've asked for a joint meeting. Uh, I was gonna bring it up later, but Barb's gonna be asking the utility board for some money out of the complex, and I specifically remember asking last meeting for us to have a joint meeting with the utility board to discuss those funds on the athletic complex and that specific issue. Remember when the light holes? So, I mean, a joint meeting would be nice because we need to be discussing that, because Barb shouldn't be left on her own to go approach the utility board to, to address that. And we asked specifically for a joint meeting.
So I wanna. Okay, for sure. Well, uh, so I think one meeting is gonna consist of a few people that are walking downtown and.
Right.
Probably has some needs there, but you're, you're talking about a meeting here.
The second, I mean, once you figure out what you need, we need a joint meeting because, again, Barb shouldn't be left to, to deal with the, the athletic complex. We specifically asked to have a joint meeting. So I think that can be part of that joint meeting.
Yeah.
Cause you have to know where you're starting from before.
But as far as the electrical and stuff downtown, was there some individuals that approached you and said, I think we need. Or they want to come to the meeting?
Meetings have been brought up as seat meetings, um, so. Do you have your good ideas?
Yeah.
That's what I'm.
I mean, at RBTV, we, we needed more electricity and we had to very, I mean, they had to very carefully maneuver where people were because the electricals down there are not. But if you want more events downtown and you're gonna keep having stuff like RBTV, it's probably something we need to explore.
Thank you.
Yeah, for sure.
Okay. So, okay, I think I mentioned that Peter Johnson and I. Working on the gas line under I A D. Spoke with. Mr. Boyd with Iowa Utility Board, and the Iowa Utility Board is gonna open up a case file. To open up negotiations with Mid American Energy. We've been. Peter Johnson didn't find out for Mid American Energy. To get a gas line under the interstate would be three hundred and forty-two thousand. Which I have to say is a. A major accomplishment on behalf of Peter, because getting any information out of them was extremely difficult.
Out of the Americans?
Out of the Americans. Peter practically took on the job of a gas line engineer. So, uh, do you wanna commend him for that? But we are working on that and gaining some progress. So the Iowa Utility Boards are going to open up negotiations and see if we can get them to contribute towards that cost.
I bet that will be helpful. Is our attorney helping you with that?
Uh, do not have our attorney involved in this yet.
So Iowa Utilities is going to negotiate on our behalf?
Iowa Utility Board is.
That's what they do, yeah, a lot of people do that.
So, uh, and I will say that. That coming about was a result of some conversation with Forrest and Chip and brainstorming and coming up with some ideas, so. Do you wanna commend the people that work with me?
Matt, that's probably pretty important with Quick Start coming in on what type of equipment they're gonna have.
Warren, was this your thought to begin? Remember in a meeting and you said it would be nice and so. Yeah, is that where this?
I was, my, my. We hold off on signing the franchise agreement.
That's what it was, I remember that.
Yeah, we're, we're moving in the right direction.
And it might be a even, I'm, I'm not trying to say a bridge is not important, but it might even be more important than a bridge.
Oh, in terms of development south of the, absolutely, yeah, this is a.
One of the business owners out there, you know, they're on straight propane, and he says that propane tears up their equipment.
Yep.
Faster.
Yeah, lost outfits won't even consider. Less than that, yes.
So. And then, uh, there's a. And then central Iowa collision. I've reached out to Jason Van Laanville, and he has not received any information for the last couple of weeks from, and Forrest.
How was this brought to your attention? I thought we decided on this already and it was done. I didn't realize we were coming back to it again, I mean, that's how we made our decision and. Was that, was I wrong, that we, we've given him his options and if he's in full compliance, I don't. I'm just confused why we're.
I reached out to a lawyer and I said, what's your opinion? And he said, you gave a fifteen dollar day fine, that ain't even what a loan would be for two hundred thousand dollars, this would go on for ten years.
But that was our decision.
And, and you're.
Right, was that. He gave him a fifteen dollar fine per day and for him to.
I thought it was up to a hundred and twenty days. No, we gave him no deadline.
No deadline.
And that's what the lawyer said, there's gotta be a deadline.
But we said until you get.
A certificate of occupancy.
So following up on that, which. I'm glad you're being proactive and following up to see if we have plans, because we could just sit here in a kind of false scenario, so.
No, I mean, I'm not faulting him for that.
Right, I'm, I'm, I'm glad, I'm glad he did that, but yeah, I think having that update, you know, definitely, because like. You said, you know, and I, and I know the last time when he voted on it, he didn't put any deadline on it, so, you know. It could, it could go on unless we do that, or we just say. We gotta be done, so.
I think updating your report is great, but I don't know why we're.
Got you, with Jason's here, cause there was some kind of discussion we had, and there was a hundred and twenty days. It was either if. That's for Forrest, give the plans or whatever it is. Do you remember that ending?
Yeah, it was as soon as I get the building permit, it's only been for a hundred.
Hundred and twenty days, that's what it is.
That's what it was.
So as soon as I get the building permit, after a hundred and twenty days.
I knew there was a hundred and twenty days, and there's some or so.
I mean, at our August meeting, Jason said we should have architectural plans within two weeks in August, but this is November, it wasn't done.
That's if all those architectural engineers are sitting around with nothing to do.
And you have nothing yet.
I sure did.
Here's my thing, I feel like we're harassing him.
So J- Jason. I had a Zoom call meeting with Jason and my civil engineer on September twenty-second, twenty-third, somewhere in there. Just going over the ins and outs of everything, I mean, I'm a body man, I don't, I'm trying to do this. Small business, you know, I could go hire a guy and pay him an extra, you know, ten percent of my project cost, but. This is where I'm at, this is a small building, so he helped me guide me through everything I need to do, all the different regulations. Questions I had, uh, between me and my civil engineer. With you guys, back in August of. Different quotes and things, and in that was a receipt. So this drawing I have right here was the one that I paid for in July, I received this drawing on October tenth. So that gives you kind of a timeline of how speedy engineers are on this thing, so. In the timeline of things, in order to have the building permit and get the engineered site plan, like I had to have this first. To get the inside engineered stuff done, the, the standalone, you know, office, bathroom, plumbing, electrical, you know, mechanical. I can't do any of that until I got this done. So I reached out to the guy that is doing those plumbing, mechanical, electrical things, he's gonna help me out with the interior stuff, so this. I'll share this one, it's in here. This plan is. From Midwest Manufacturing, this is the building that I purchased, the plan that I purchased, sorry, I don't have a. Have an easel. Site plan, just kind of a rough sketch for, cause this plan only includes the structure, the terraces, the walls, the sheeting, the insulation. You know, and it's stamped and something, so. So Midwest Manufacturing, they only sell the buildings, so. I tried to get the guy that was drafting this to come up with my office space, my bathroom, all that stuff. He refused to do it, he basically, you know, these were just, what I was buying from them was only what they were gonna engineer, basically is what he told me, so. Um, so I had to reach out to many electrical, plumbing, engineering gentlemen, so. So that's where I'm currently at, I'm working with that guy, so I really wasn't checking back in with Jason to. Have, you know, I gotta have. Five more of these. Put together in order to achieve that building permit.
And you have no idea how long that's gonna take?
I mean, I, I did reach out to each one of these engineers and find out, so. Working with Jason Lennon with Snyder Associates on my civil engineering. We, he was on that Zoom call with me, I'm on his schedule. He's gonna get to me, I mean, he's gotta come out, look at my site. Do locate, find out where all my utilities are in order to do the site plan, you know, and. The guy that's doing the plumbing and the electrical and stuff, he needs to know that too, where the services comes in and all that stuff too, so. I mean, like I said, I'm trying to do it as quickly as possible and not break the bank, you know. I mean, that's what I got.
Do you have your finances lined up then, the, the, on what you think it's gonna cost?
Yeah, I set up private costs, in order to, like, when I filled out my tip papers, I went through all of that, so. Granted, that was. May, when I had all those estimates put together in that packet, I'm sure some of that's gone up by now, you know. And it, it's not that. Dragging my feet is intended, you know, I, I get it, not setting a deadline and, you know, four hundred and fifty bucks a month, it's gonna be something, you're just going on it. But this isn't doing me any good, like prolonging this, I mean, not, not only paying money that's going to nothing. Interest rates are raising, so I mean, this is costing me more every day, whether I like it or not, and, and that's. This is my business and this is what I'm doing, I'm pushing forward, so.
But you need five more of those plans before you even.
Yeah, I've got the one guy working on four of them, so.
Sounds like it's processing, I mean, we all know things are not moving quickly. Do you think by December you could have, you could call Matt, give him an update, he can.
Can coordinate with, with.
Jason?
I can share these as I get them with Jason, I mean, he doesn't really need them, you know, just keep dropping them to him.
I, I would say follow the route and go with Jason, and. Uh, I think the big thing here, you know, is, is the communication, you know, cause when, I think when Matt reached out to Jason and says, no plans or communication has been. Uh, submitted by you, and. I think lack of communication, any kind of communication, anything, hey, this is what I'm doing. And when, when they don't have that, that tends to make people go, what, what's up, you know? So just keeping that open channel and really, you know, letting him know where he's at, you know, and then when Matt follows up with him. Then you'll have something to say, I, I would just really. Keep that communication open on, on your end.
Yeah, I don't feel like we need to waste our time in other, you know, we have other issues that we could be discussing up here than going through and badgering you every month about. Your finances and everything else, I think we can just. A simple call to Matt and Jason and then they can update us.
Yep, gotcha, yep, we'll check with them.
Thank you.
So, thanks, thanks.
Thanks.
Matt, are you ready for me?
Yes.
Are you done with your report?
Yes.
So, uh, today we found out that we were not granted the Adair County Foundation grant. That you submitted, correct?
Correct, I applied for the Adair County Foundation grant for marketing.
And those were to engage services with Nate West Street, correct?
Yes, we will utilize Main Street marketing to perform. Promoting Stewart, Stewart's defense, Stewart's. Stewart news positively about Stewart, what Stewart has to offer.
Very good at what he does, I mean, he, he did all of the RBTV stuff and look how great it turned out. So I was curious to see what the council feels. Maybe having Matt ask seed for five thousand dollars in tip to be able, or five thousand of their money that we give them to. Use Nate's services since we weren't allowed the grant, and just having him go on, I think you have a meeting Thursday?
Yes.
And see if we can't use some of those funds to engage with his services to help promote Stewart. It might get us more businesses up here, I mean, I think you can go plenty of routes.
Cause that would be granted for.
That's what he, I mean, he asked for ten thousand, but I'm just seeing, you know, maybe if we used five thousand and we asked, see, you know, it's money that we give to seed anyways. To explore that, just to see, I mean, it could turn into a number of things.
I, I can pose that to them, and there are certain values.
To make sure that everybody is kind of on the same page there and get thoughts from these gentlemen.
Pose that to them, seed does have a budget of items as well, and it's. Most of it's allocated for.
Anybody have thoughts? I was seeking thoughts from these guys before he asked.
I don't have thoughts, since I don't know Main Street marketing that well, you know, I don't, I, I, I mean, just. And I, from what you're saying, I, I understand what they do, but, you know, I don't know how long they've been doing it, uh, I don't really necessarily just want. Pull stuff up to. Certain ways to get.
Nate West Street, he's a local.
Yeah.
He's, okay, so he's worked for a major advertising, marketing firm in Des Moines, and he's broke out of zone and. He's working on small towns. So, and services that he's gonna go offering to Stewart, uh, he's gonna be offering those to other communities as well.
What other communities has he worked for?
That's his business, I don't know. Yeah, so, but he's, you know, he's a free agent, he can.
So, so what he did for RBTV, only because I was there to witness it, he had a timeline of who to reach out to, when to send ads, when to do things. I've seen his ads for Schwinger Long Care, I don't know, have you seen them on, I'm on Facebook? I don't know, have you seen them on, I'm on Facebook, they come up sponsored, there's some pretty clever ones. But he's got, and he does all of the chamber stuff, he, I'm, I think he's good at what he does, and I think, I mean, so what I'm asking is maybe we just ask seed, to see if we can do that, maybe to engage and see what that engagement and that's what it looks like with him, to see what he can offer this lead. I mean, Matt can only do so much with what he's allowed with his time, so.
I'm sure, no, I, I
Marketing in the city is.
You're definitely free to ask.
Yeah, I think that was something that he would, he would maybe look into, I think it'd be great for him to come give like a presentation, because I, I agree with my wife, she'd probably tell you, tell me a ton of stuff about it. I don't really know. So like, if he could come and tell us exactly what he would offer the city of Stewart, I'd be all ears about it.
Okay.
And this is just a way of using money that we're already allocating to somebody without having to take it out of our own pocket.
See if he'll come for the December twelfth maybe?
Yeah. And then, uh, and have him come, see if he'll come to the twelfth, the meeting on the twelfth.
Yep.
Thank you, Matt.
Just heard it, from an open invitation. Throughout Seat's history, we've often had, uh, representation of the city council or the mayor's office, uh, attend the seat meetings. So, if anybody would like to come to the meeting, uh, at seven AM at Country Kitchen Thursday morning, and then we well, if you don't get a quorum, you're gonna have to worry about open meetings.
This Thursday morning?
This Thursday.
This Thursday.
Second. You said seven AM?
Seven AM. Just let Matt know, we do require you to sign a confidentiality agreement, because a lot of times you talk about business stuff that's not
Not out there yet.
Not out there yet, exactly.
Okay. You done that, Matt?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Hey, Stewart Mammoth Project, you got some updates?
So this is a rebid of a project that we did earlier this year. If you remember, we received no bids, and, uh, talking to the contractors, they were pretty much booked up uh, for the year, so we're, we waited until the fall to go out for rebid for this work to be done next spring. And so, uh, this is for the city's files, I gave one copy to Jim already. And the council wants to look, um, where they live and what manholes are being done outside your house. This is, uh, this is where we're looking to do the work. This map has not changed since last spring, but I'm sure most of you do not remember what we were doing, um, last spring, so. This is in the book, this is the bigger version. So tonight, we're just looking to set the here, totally current date, which would be your next council meeting, and the bid date, which I think was Thursday before the council meeting or something, two o'clock.
You need a motion?
So.
Second.
How's that?
Yep.
How do you look, Patrick?
Yes.
Goli?
Yes.
Calva?
Yes.
Renzo?
Yes.
Okay, nine? Street improvement project, A estimate?
So, this is just a partial pay estimate for the work that's to date, it's, it's most of the work, there might be another four, five thousand dollars of work remaining. Uh, we're under budget. The original budget was about three hundred ninety-three thousand, we're at three hundred fifty-five thousand and seventy-eight thousand of that is accounted. So that was for doing some asphalt work out towards the cemetery on East Six, South Six, going east out of town. So that's, so that includes their share. So, we've sent Ash how much to build accounting, and they'll reimburse the city for that.
What's the maintenance bond on this first?
Two-year maintenance bond.
Because I'm not real happy with it as it sits.
Yeah, with the shouldering on
With the shouldering and the manhole adjusters.
Okay, I don't know about the manhole. I, I drove it to the council meeting, it was kind of hard to see in the dark.
Is that where you sit?
But we had holes are down.
Well, no, they, they removed foot risers on them today, but I'm not having to, now they address them.
Okay. So yeah, this is not a final, this is not accepting, and, and then the shoulder work is not included in this pay estimate.
The county shares seventy-eight thousand eight hundred twenty-seven. That's beyond the thirty-seven. County shares seventeen. And we have seventeen thousand in the ten inch.
Uh, yes, that's right.
So that should cover.
Oh, yeah.
Can you all address those, whatever he has going?
Need a motion to approve mine E and B.
Calva, second, Goli, how do you look? Patrick?
Yes.
Goli?
Yes.
Calva?
Yes.
Renzo?
Yes.
That's awesome.
Thank you, Mayor.
Are you gonna be leaving right now?
Uh, no, Mayor.
Okay, I had a question. Two thousand, forty-two tax.
Is this one of the, please, on your table, Neil, is there anyone else you do? And I will, this thing, really. How about check?
Yes, hello, Adam.
How are you? Good. I am discussing the item of the TIF certificate. I, Chip is big help for our finance. And he is working with me on that certificate. We have to certify by December first. This is very much to meet our obligation. All that stuff has been approved by the council.
Casey's is not on here, correct? Isn't this where we're leaving Casey's off?
Casey's off. Uh, we, uh, certify this every year, like I said, to meet our obligation. Uh, all this stuff has been approved by the council. We have Chip on the floor, if you have any questions. He is about three hundred miles away from me, so.
I, I was just coming out of a couple items in my thing about this, this year's TIF certificate.
Okay.
If, a couple items, the amount, in the top half of the page, you see an amount of, of the twenty eighteen bond issued that's paid from Adair County Winter End revenues. That's, uh, I think roughly a hundred and twenty-three thousand. So that's continuing to increase each year as the, uh, eighteen winter, the county permitted the city to collect in its original area as those come on the tax rolls. The other part that I would highlight, I think there are either three or four new development agreements in the bottom half of this spreadsheet. Those are broken out, for, for example, for Hotel Stewart, Carol, and, and the others that are listed, those are highlighted in, in, in bold font. The other item to highlight, the this year's TIF certificate, which drives TIF collections for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, so the fiscal year that begins July one of twenty twenty-three, it includes the capture of it's at the bottom of the page, roughly, I think it's a hundred and four thousand of dollars for the TIF light remediation program, and that's generated from the first three houses of the, uh, of the housing development on the east side of the city. And, uh, there's, it's, it's roughly two million in TIF certification share with less of, of portion of uh, TIF paid for cash, and, uh, I'm happy to answer, just to get the questions, uh, list out the, the highlights from there.
Say any question? If not, we need a motion. Come out, move back here, Renzo.
I'll second it.
Patrick, how do you look? Patrick?
Yes.
Goli?
Yes.
Calva?
Yes.
Renzo?
Yep.
Thank you, Chip.
Thank you, Chip.
Alright, thank you.
Your last proposal for voluntary annexation, headed by Tibbin.
I'm gonna have to ask the Tibbins if you have any questions. I think I, uh, prepped you on this, previous meetings, uh, Tibbins have signed a purchase agreement with Seed to sell a strip of land to put in a street between Northeast Second Street and, uh, White Pole Road. The, uh, Tibbins, uh, agreed with the planning and zoning, that it would be better to curve the street farther to the east since we can't go west. Like, I thought we should, uh, uh, I thought, uh, actually having it curved over to where the current Tibbin driveway is, and then them having an access off of there, and perhaps an access farther north, um, would be ideal. So, um, Forrest is working on exactly how much land we need to buy, but, uh, to get this into the TIF district, we have to annex, um, parcel into the city of Stewart, we have to get it zoned. Uh, planning and zoning is recommending that it be zoned residential. That's my brain. Uh, so we're asking that the city direct the city attorney to proceed with the annexation, voluntary annexation process, and also the, uh, zoning. I'm not sure how that's set out in the agenda.
Okay.
Be happy to answer.
I, I'm glad you addressed, you know, the curving of the road, because I was gonna ask you, so, instead of coming back like we were talking about, it makes sense.
We need a motion to approve the composer and refer it to the city. Move back, Calva.
Second. Second, by Goli, how do you look? Patrick?
Yes.
Goli?
Yes.
Calva?
Yes.
Renzo?
Yes.
Thank you very much, Mark.
Okay. Do you have to each of these separate?
Yes.
Okay.
All the, next item, you will be
Twelve, Resolution Number twenty-two forty-two C, setting a date, which would be December twelfth.
Need a motion.
And this is on the zoning for lot twenty-two of the second edition?
Yes. Move back, Calva.
Second.
Second, by Renzo, how do you look? Patrick?
Yes.
Goli?
Yes.
Calva?
Yes.
Renzo?
Yes.
Okay, thirteen, Resolution Number twenty-two forty-three C.
See, it's in second, by Goli.
I'll second it.
Second, by Calva.
And this is for the asset on the secondary property from Pankas Park, so residential?
Yeah. We're just coming from the, our certificate. Hold it and screw it up.
How do you look? Patrick?
Yes.
Goli?
Yes.
Calva?
Yes.
Renzo?
Yes.
Fourteen, Resolution Number twenty-two forty-four C.
To change the zoning owned by Joyce and Walter Hick.
Yes. I'll move back.
Calva?
Second.
Renzo? Patrick?
Yes.
Goli?
Yes.
Calva?
Yes.
Renzo?
Yes.
Fifteen, Resolution Number twenty-two forty-five C.
Where is this parcel at?
Parcel G is what will be, it's the McGowan property that Seat purchased, that will be the bulk, well, it'll be all the, well, unless we add in some resi, we curve the road, we might get a residential lot or two, but all the rest of the residential, it's McGowan property that'll be the, the long hole for the addition.
You need a motion?
So, vote.
Move by Renzo, second, by Calva, how do you look? Patrick?
Yes.
Goli?
Yes.
Calva?
Yes.
Renzo?
Yes.
Sixteen, Department of Transportation Commission, I would like to appoint Crystal Patrick to this, with the council approval.
I'll make that motion.
Move by Renzo.
I'll second it.
Goli, how do you look? Patrick?
I'm staying.
Goli?
Yes.
Calva?
Yes.
Renzo?
Yes.
Okay, public forum.
Can I go? Okay, I've got a few things, I'll make it quick. First of all, I'd like to thank our buyer chief for setting up a meeting with the emergency management people and getting, uh, Pat Howie, Trevor Nelson, Ben Stouffer, the mayor, Ash, and Sarah to help form a plan to notify the citizens of anything that happens. So if the water main break happens again, they have a way of notifying the public of what's going on. So, I think they've set up a plan, and I think utilities have took it from there, and that way we have a master, and Matt was there too. So, that was great of all of those people to work together to, to make something happen. Um, second, PD, uh, I have been asking the mayor about the speed cameras on the interstate for a long time. I talked to Dave Reha, he's gonna have the gentleman for the cameras come and talk to us in December to give us the information and just kind of discuss what that looks like and all of that. And then I'd also like to thank, uh, Officer Irving and Officer Martenson. Officer Irving went over to Dexter during their Casey's incident, and Shane, uh, took it upon himself to come out and patrol the city while Daniel was over there dealing with that, to make sure that if the person who robbed it came to Stewart, that they could get him and just to patrol to make sure nothing happened here in town. Um, I think I get on the joint meeting for Barb's part and her report. I don't think it's fair to her to have to go to them. We should have that joint meeting like we asked. Um, and then, today I spoke with Ash regarding, um, our investigation that we currently have going on, and I don't wanna talk about it, but I asked him, because it's been going on for a while, what the timeframe looks like to deal with that. And I asked that if we don't have a report by December, that maybe we hold a special meeting with our attorneys and have a closed session so we can discuss what that's gonna look like, because I think a lot of time has gone by, and I think we need to take some kind of action, but, I'm just throwing that out there. And then I would also ask if Ash can ask the utility board to let the citizens of Stewart know about this water project. I've seen a lot of people, um, upset about their yards, and I don't think they know that their yards are going to be resurfaced, and all of that dirt and stuff's gonna be redone. So maybe we can get something out there to the public, so people don't think they have to do that stuff themselves. When are they doing that, Christine?
Next spring.
I have no idea, that's a good question. Know nothing about it, I just know that across my street They told me next spring. It's all tore up. I know that Mike Johnson's yard, that corner, he's worked so nice, you know, hard to get, it's all tore up. So, I just need some communication with our public to let them know that, yes, we are tearing up their yards, but yes, we will fix it, and when that maybe would be helpful.
Kid in this new system do that?
Uh, I, I don't, I don't know. I mean, that's
I think that, that the emergency notification system should probably not be used for that. That's what we have our website for, um, I don't, I don't think
I was gonna ask the same thing, like, if, if garbage can't be picked up on, on a day, like, is there, is there any way we could sense the off of that, instead of, you know, having forty mile an hour wind that day, and then half the town puts their garbage out and then we
I, I, I just look at using an emergency system like that for, like, garbage, or your yard's gonna be
It's more for like a loyal advisory, or ratio, or
Yeah, it's more, it's more for emergencies. I mean, this is where we need to utilize our board out front for stuff like that, or the website.
Yeah, I see.
Or, or some of the utility billing?
Who would have any, the utility bill?
Utility bills, uh, you got the radio that can mention about the
We can, we can see
Yeah, something like that.
I was wondering, you mean, make sure, like, okay, something like that, I didn't know the correct process or whatever.
But it's something we can also discuss at our joint meeting that we're going to have.
Yeah, I think with this stuff, they tell you, in that specific situation.
And I think they have something going on in this utility bill to let people know to sign up for that alert system.
Yes.
And it is on the website, which I appreciate seeing that, yes.
I don't
Yeah, it's got big papers about the alert, this is all our emergency management meeting the other day. Sign up. Uh, anybody have anything here?
I got a couple things.
Um, for the announcements and stuff, if you wanted to email the radio station, I'm the new news director
Oh, okay.
There, I took over for Logan recently. He's still staying with the company, but I've been taking over his position here. If you want to send it to us, I can also get, um, breaking news stories out when that happens, or if it's something that, hey, coming up in a couple days when I do this, I could put a story out so that people know it's going to happen.
Perfect. Okay, thank you. What's your name?
My name's Marcus.
Okay, thanks. Okay, uh, Forrest, I got a question. Do you have any update on our DOT bids on Northeast Second on this Google sidewalk project?
Bids are scheduled to be received in January.
On January, okay.
Uh, after your January council meeting. So we will not have the bids for your January council meeting, it'll be February before we bring the bids to council for consideration. before we bring the bids to council for consideration.
I received a letter from a person that tore up our old football field, he wanted it read. I won't, I'll have to take out a couple things he put in here. To the city of Stewart, I would like to apologize for my actions. I made a big mistake in doing donuts on Thursday on homecoming night. I was trying to do, be Billy Blankety-Blank in front of my friends, as it turned out the wrong way. I felt terrible for what I did, I hurt the little kids more than anything, because that's the field they play on and put them at risk for an injury. I would let you, let's see. I would like to fix my mistake, I want to fix the field a bit better, and just say I'm sorry again and make them feel better. Hopefully earn everyone's trust back, but we did have Swinger fix the field, and this is him in force right now, and they're probably a fucking.
Well, it's, I'm ready to address it, what's stepped up, so.
Any else have anything? Thank you.